Dan Hilli, Nashua City Clerk. The result of the votes cast for Board of Education was duly canvassed by the Board of Aldman as by law provided. It ended appearing therefrom that Jennifer Bishop, Shawanda Daniels-Williams, Sharon Giglio, Rob Johnson, and Kirsten Prin have been duly elected members of the Board of Education, and they are qualified as such for the ensuing four years. At this time, I'd like to ask those five individuals to please stand up and raise your right hand. I'm gonna read a statement at the end, I'm gonna need you to say "I do." Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a Board of Education member according to the best of your abilities, agreeable to the rules and regulations of the city charter and the constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire? So help you God.
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to ask these two student representatives to please stand up, Warren Farley, Nashua High School North, and Thanasi Maris, Nashua High School South. And at this time, I'm gonna administer an oath of office for you two, and at the end, so please raise your right hand, and at the end state "I do." Do you solemnly swear that you faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all duties incumbent upon you as a Board of Education student representative according to the best of your abilities, agreeable to the rules and regulations of the city charter and the constitutions and the law of the state of New Hampshire? So help you God. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you. I know because we missed the inauguration because of the snow, there are cupcakes and cookies over there, help yourselves. Always gotta be a party when I'm around. Okay, so this is your meeting.
Okay, so the outgoing clerk is the one that runs the organizational meeting, so this is my first meeting, please bear with me. It is 6:03 PM, and we're in the Nashua North Boardroom, and we're gonna begin with the roll call, which is not in correct order at this point, but I'm gonna begin. Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Mr. Claffey?
Here.
Ms. Giglio?
Here.
Ms. Raymond?
Here.
I am here. Ms. Prin?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Ms. Davis-Williams?
Here.
And Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Okay. All right, so we also have our student members. Thanasi?
Here.
And Warren?
Here.
And also present is Dr. Andre, Dr. Sarfati, and Mr. Poska. And welcome back, everybody, it's so nice to see you all. Happy New Year. And we're gonna begin by opening the nominations for president. Yes, Ms. Darling?
I would like to nominate Jen Bishop for another year as president, if I might speak to that.
Oh, yes, of course. I think I need a second first. Ms. Giglio is gonna second that.
No, I just was clarifying that we need to second it, and then we can have a discussion.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I should keep my mic off.
I'll second it. I'll second it, so you can go ahead, Ms. Darling.
In the last two years of Jen being at our helm, we have come together a lot more than I've seen the board together in almost four years. I have not always agreed with her, and there have been many tense times where we have disagreed, but I have to have admiration for the fact that even with, you know, having her her own personal life, her own job, her own everything else, she still puts in the hours and the commitment and the time it takes to do the job of president and do it well, as far as I've ever seen. So I look forward to another year of her working with us.
Excellent. Are there any other nominations? Seeing done, let's do, all in favor, say "Aye."
Aye.
You have to be vocal.
We have to close the nominations.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm gonna...
There's a motion to close the nominations.
Can someone...
Close the nominations.
Thank you, Ms. Raymond. A second?
Second.
And, okay, and it has to be vocal call, so Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Mr. Claffey? Ms. Giglio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Ms. Prin?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Davis-Williams?
Yes.
And Ms. Bishop?
No.
Is that official?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so Ms. Bishop is now our president for the upcoming year. And, sorry, now I would like to open the nominations for clerk.
I'd like to nominate Regan Lamphier to continue on as clerk.
Second.
Thank you, guys, I guess.
May I speak to my motion as well?
Sure.
For my nomination. I really enjoyed sitting next to you, I think you take fantastic notes, and you're still able to participate in the meeting. It's a weird job to be in because you're juggling your own thoughts and managing all the thoughts of everybody else and getting it down on paper. It's not an easy job, and you have done it very well, and it's certainly a learning curve, isn't it? Yeah, it's at times really hard, but you've definitely done it with perfection, and I've appreciated sitting next to you this whole time.
Okay. Are there any other nominations?
Those nominations.
Okay.
Second.
All right, the nominations are now closed. Ms. Raymond?
You have to vote on that.
Yes, Ms. Raymond. Ms. Raymond made the motion, and Ms. Darling seconded it, and, okay, so Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Giglio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
I'm a yes.
Ms. Prin?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Davis-Williams?
Yes.
And Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Okay, and let's see, oh, now we need to establish the roll call order. Did I vote? Oh, I did I skip myself? I'm sorry, I'm a, no, I did, I'm a yes, so yes, I'm the clerk for the upcoming year. Thank you, everybody, and so now we move on. And now we move on to establish the roll call order, so we're gonna pick numbers out of a hat, which I believe Dr. Andre has.
In the bag.
This is a box. Like a little white box.
Mm-hmm.
This box.
And it doesn't matter, I always go last. Oh, no, you get to walk them around. And everyone picks one out of the hat, over their head.
I get one for a third year in a row, I'm going home crying. Okay.
Okay, so you're still in charge of doing the roll call. Oh, on the other side. But that's just for me. There's a note and information.
Before we do the roll call, I just, before we read off our numbers, or I just wanted to apologize to Ms. Daniels, because I had the incorrect information about your last name, so welcome, Ms. Daniels. And, okay, so we'll begin with Ms. Darling. Go right around the circle.
I'm number six.
I'll write it down if you want, I got it.
Thank you. Ms. Raymond?
Hi.
Okay, Ms. Daniels?
Hold on, you're going too fast.
Sorry.
Ms. Prin? Oh, wait, mics.
You guys need your mics on.
I'm sorry. Six, nine.
Four.
Three.
No, stop!
Sorry, how are you doing this?
Sure enough, I've now learned I need these pretty consistently. So, Ms. Daniels-Williams, what number were you?
Four.
Ms. Prin?
Three.
Mr. Johnson?
Two.
But back to you now.
I'm number eight. And Mr. Claffey?
Five.
Ms. Giglio?
Seven.
And I got one.
So that means whoever was number two is now here. Okay.
So...
Nine, eight, seven.
Yeah, and when we come into the next meeting, we'll fiddle around with the chairs, but we sit in order, and the reason that we sit in order, A, is because it's easier for the camera to know where to be ready to look at whoever is gonna be talking next, like if you're on a committee, they know, it's just easier for them to plan on, and get to make great friends, depending on who you sit next to, right, Mr. Claffey?
Okay.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, all right, so the next thing is that...
Nine, and Sharon.
So we have handed out sheets so that we can pick out committee assignments.
Yep.
And if we can get those to the president before the end of the meeting, that way we can establish our committee assignments, and we can start our meetings for the next year. And I think...
And I may be ready with some Post-it notes and some color coded.
Of course.
Everything I've written every year.
Okay, so there's no need for a public, non-public session, and so I move to, what does anyone?
So I'm gonna do the committee assignments, we'll take a quick recess while I do this, come back in, and then we vote on the committee assignments.
Oh, okay.
And then we'll close out this meeting, and then we open up the next one to the regular full board meeting.
Sorry, everyone, yeah, so we're gonna take a short recess.
Okay, perfect. All right.
Can I motion to close the meeting?
Make sure your mic is on.
Second.
Ms. Giglio, did you do it first?
I was, I don't know. Is it just to adjourn the first meeting?
Yes.
Yes. I will motion that.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so this meeting is adjourned at 6:32? Thank you.
Started back, yeah. Looking for Jimmy for the thumbs up. Okay, so now we are officially starting again, the Board of Education meeting, I'm calling to order the Board of Education meeting, it is Monday, January 8th, 2024, we're in the Nashua North Boardroom, it is now 6:33. Ms. Lamphier, can you do the roll call, please?
Okay.
Bear with us, we have all new people tonight, and new roll call orders.
Okay, so we have Ms. Bishop.
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Ms. Prin?
Here.
Ms. Daniels-Williams?
Here.
Mr. Claffey?
Here.
Ms. Darling?
Here.
Ms. Giglio?
Here.
I am here, and Ms. Raymond?
Here.
Here, thank you.
Okay, so I am looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda from the last meeting.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Giglio.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Claffey. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say "Aye."
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay. It's gonna be such a lonely "nay."
It's fine. I'll see why the long face. Okay, motion passes. This brings us up to our first public question comment period. Mr. Johnson, your newest role is you get to get up and get the paperwork that says who is...
Don't make my mistake and wear like wobbly four-inch heels, it's horrible idea.
So only...
I mean, you could just pass it down, I thought that about myself, too. Get some steps in.
Wait, we didn't do the pledge or anything?
It's not on here. No, we didn't. For the prayer.
Do you want to...
Fine.
President? I'm just wondering, the comment period, our agenda is limited tonight, I'm wondering whether this particular comment, how could it be related to anything on our agenda?
When, so it's Steven Skare, when he comes up, he's gonna tell us what agenda item he's speaking on?
Okay.
Did I sign the wrong sheet?
Did you mean to sign up for the second? Okay, do you want us to hold off on you until the next one? Okay, thank you. So I will make a note of that, he wants to do second comment. Oh, Rob, you got the wrong one, sorry.
Oh, I got it.
So there's a first public comment and a second public comment. So you signed up correctly, Mr. Skare, sorry.
It was my fault.
Is there anybody, is there anything written on the other one?
There's nothing on the other one.
Okay, perfect. Okay. This brings us up to our first public question comment period, which nobody is at. Okay, this brings us up to the superintendent's comments, so I will hand the floor over to Dr. Andre.
Thank you. So I want to again welcome the new members of the Nashville Board of Education as student representatives. The new year brings in a complement of Nashville Board of Education members. Congratulations, Shawanda Daniels-Williams, Rob Johnson, and Kirsten Prin, who were elected last November to the board along with the incumbents Jennifer Bishop and Sharon Giglio. So welcome to our student representatives, Thanasi Maris, sophomore from Nashua South, who joins Warren Farley, a junior who's returning to represent Nashua North. Like their predecessors, they will bring a unique point of view to the board as active and involved high school students. I want to welcome you all, and I look forward to working with you in support of our students. I can't believe I'm talking about this already, but K registration is starting right around the corner. It's a new year, and we are looking to register our upcoming kindergartens as soon as possible. Registration for kindergartens begin Monday, February 5th at 9:00 AM. Like the last few years, registration will be online, we encourage parents to register their K students as soon as possible. It is important to know that the child must be five years old by September 30th, 2024 to register. If you have any questions, please contact Kathy McIntyre in the school's district office of Student Services, she can be reached at 603-966-1068. And then, as we experienced last night, winter weather has arrived, it was a true north easter yesterday. I want to give a special thanks to our plan ops for working tirelessly all day yesterday, as well as the DPW. I want to remind everyone, when we make the announcements for cancellations or delays, I consult with our local meteorologists, the Nashville Police, Nashville Public Works, and for student transportation about travel and road conditions prior to calling a delayed opening of school day. Delay or cancellation notices will be posted using our Nashville website, nashua.edu, which has the capacity to automatically translate our alert messages in all languages, phone and text messages, and our social media channels to let you know. Local television stations will also publicize a snow day or any delayed openings. So thank you, and welcome again, welcome to all our new board members.
So now we're up to board response to superintendent's comments. What you guys will learn is I randomly pick which side, but that means Heather and Rob will always have to be ready to go at a moment's notice, because it will always start with one of you. So tonight, I will start with Heather, so I don't freak you guys out too much. So Senior Hurdy goes first, right now.
I have nothing, thank you for the update, welcome, everybody, I'm excited about this year. Yay.
Giglio?
I'm just happy to be here and happy to be serving with the people sitting here tonight, I'm looking forward to a great year, and actually four great years, thank you.
Darling?
I'm so excited you guys are here. That's it.
Ms. Lamphier?
Well, this isn't technically a response to Dr. Andre, but I did wanna make sure an announcement was made that the inauguration had to be canceled because of the snow, but we will be holding a ceremony at the Performing Arts Center in downtown Nashua tomorrow night at 6 o'clock, and all of the board members are welcome to attend. You've already been sworn in, but you will have seats on the stage if you want to go. And, yeah, I hope we have a nice turnout for everybody, thanks.
Dr. Claffey?
No, thanks.
No, thanks. Ms. Daniels-Williams?
Andre, I'm happy to be here.
Ms. Prin?
Thank you so much, I'm really excited to be here, that's it.
Mr. Johnson?
No, thank you very much, thank you for welcoming us, it's gonna be fun to be part of this board, looking forward to it, thanks.
This brings us up to the student member comments. I don't know if you guys, if you guys are fighters like the last crew, but Mr. Maris, do you want to go first?
The part where we give our speeches?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Good evening and Happy New Year, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Athanasios Medes, I go by Thanasi, and I'm a second-generation Greek-American living here in Nashua. I am currently a sophomore at Nashua High School South, where I am tuba section leader in select band, member of the jazz band, and a member of the Grand Estate Challenge Team. Also a cross-country, and outdoor, and indoor track runner. Outside of school, I am heavily involved in my church community, St. Philip Greek Orthodox Church, where I serve as an altar boy and a member of Goya, which is the Greek Orthodox Youth of America Teen Ministry Group. I also volunteer at the Greek Food Festival every year. Stay tuned for more details about that as the year goes on. I'm very excited to be Nashua South's new student representative for this board, so I can accurately depict and voice students' concern about their education and school community. Now, if this is like a good spot to say this, but things going on at South in the next couple weeks, I'd like to wish the track team good luck at Wildcat Relays this Wednesday. Center Stage has their winter concert also on Wednesday. The next driver's education lottery is at South on January 16th at 3:15. I'd like to wish all my fellow students, both at North, I believe as well, and South, good luck on their Semester One finals, which are on January 22nd and 24th. Primary day for the 2024 presidential election is on the 23rd of January, no school that day, go out and vote if you can, it's gonna be a very pivotal year. First day of Semester Two is January 25th, and course selection for the next school year begins on January 25th. Thank you all for listening, and I look forward to working with all of you in the next coming year.
Yo, Mr. Farley?
Good evening, everyone. For those who don't know me, my name is Warren Farley, and I am currently Nashua North's student representative to the Board of Education. I am a junior, and I'm interested in studying economics and politics in the future. I'm now in my second year of this position, and so far have learned some very valuable experiences. I look forward to working with Thanasi and our new board members. Having already served a year, if you guys have any questions, please feel free to reach out. I'm only kidding, but in all seriousness, I am excited, I am excited at the work we can get done this year, and I really think that we can make a difference in our beloved city. Thank you.
Yo, yes, we're looking forward to working with both of you, and seeing how much more you grow, Farley. You've really grown into that role, so I'm proud of you. We have no updates on committees, so this brings us up to, I'm gonna say unfinished business with the committee assignments that we didn't finish up at the last one, is that, do I get consensus on finishing up the committee assignments in this meeting? King nods. Okay, okay. So, one of the things that we put together at the beginning of the year is who wants to be on what committee? I give you all, well, Ms. Consella gives you all sheets to fill out. We have Human Resources Committee, Curriculum and Evaluation Committee, Policy Committee, Finance and Operations Committee, there's the Joint Special, there's also the Budget, and we have student board member liaisons and ed council that we need to fill spots for. HR, Policy, Finance, and Ops, and Joint Special, really, everybody's getting their first choice, so I'll run your names after, but I was hoping we could have a very quick discussion about curriculum and evaluation. For many of you, Kirsten, Ms. Prin, it's your first choice to be on this committee, so I'd like to honor that, but I have Ms. Giglio, Ms. Raymond, Ms. Darling, Shawanda, Mr. Claffey, all with CNE being their second choice. Mr. Johnson, with it being your third, I was just gonna say I patched you in elsewhere, if that's okay, but I was hoping we could just have a live discussion if anybody wants to say why they would like to be on CNE, or if they want to hand it over to somebody else, so. Yes.
Sorry, I sit in the corner of my committee up at the State House, too, so I'm constantly doing this.
So, I keep talking about moving over there so I can see everybody better, but TV doesn't...
So I don't have any particular institutional knowledge to bring to CNE, although I think it's fascinating and I really enjoy it, I'm happy to rescind my choice, or whatever, if there's somebody else who brings some, you know, background in CNE that would probably offer more to the committee than me.
So, that leaves Ms. Darling...
It crossed me off.
Well, let's see if somebody else feels the same way, too. Ms. Darling, Ms. Daniels-Williams, and Mr. Claffey, do they remain your top choices?
I didn't understand.
Yeah. Oh, they want your mic.
I'm sorry, yes, okay.
Do you still want to?
I do, I do, and actually, although I marked it as my second choice, but, you know, having written curriculum for the library for over 19 years, and having been a substitute librarian in three of our elementary schools, and also in my previous employment, I wrote curriculum for, for, can I forget? The little sections where people needed...
Advisory.
Advisory, thank you, thank you. So I did spend a whole summer with one other person writing advisory for fifth grade, doing that, and so, and I do think that it's maybe a bit more work than some of the committees I've served on in the past, but I'm willing to do that, even though I marked it as my second choice, I'm pretty inspired.
That's really your first choice?
Yeah, I guess so, yeah.
Okay, so if Ms. Prin and Ms. Giglio, that's their first choice, then we have Ms. Darling being your second, Mr. Claffey being second, Ms. Daniels-Williams being your second. So, is anybody more interested in being an alternate or being a main member on the board, on the committee? Yes, Ms. Darling?
So I just spent the last year on curriculum, and it was incredibly valuable to be on, I learned a lot. Part of me wants to step back, give somebody else a try, at the same time, I am very mindful of the fact that one of my favorite aspects of curriculum has been how well-balanced it's been between educators, parents, like, and people that have different roles, and I think that's one of the assets we've had, so I meet one of those niches.
I think everyone's fighting over your dance card, Dr. Sarfati. Yes, yes, and I do like to honor that, too. You guys are aware that every committee meeting is open to you, just because you're not a voting member on the committee, you can still attend all of the committee meetings, so even if you don't become a voting member of this particular committee, you can still come and participate and give your three cents. So with that said, you on with the discussion, you two, how important is it to you to be on the CNE committee? How important is it to you to be on the CNE committee?
Yeah, I've enjoyed working with Dr. Sarfey and Mr. Poska for the past year, I believe. I was a high school teacher here for 32 years. I was a head teacher for three years, social studies head teacher. I was part of the process that wrote the Understanding by Design curriculum frameworks that I think are still in place, so I'd appreciate the chance to continue that role.
Daniels-Williams?
Well, as a new board member, I would like to listen and learn, and CNE seems, it was one of the major ones that I wanted to sit on, so I would like the opportunity, if possible. Thank you.
Okay, so let me let all of that kind of marinate for a second, and let me read off to you everybody else's, how it fell within the first choices, and see if it pops back as something else. So, for HR, and everybody might want to get a pen and paper ready for this, because we vote on these as a whole, but you can make amendments to it. But for HR, I was Ms. Gilio for Chair, Raymond, and Mr. Johnson, with Shawanda Daniels-Williams being the alternate. For Policy, am I going slow enough for everyone? Okay. For Policy, Ms. Raymond for Chair, Ms. Darling, Ms. Lamphier, with the alternate being Mr. Claffey. Actually, Mr. Didn't indicate that you wanted to be on that anymore, Mr. Claffey, right? Right?
I think Mr. Claffey loved Policy. He wasn't his favorite. Policy is super fun, and everyone should be on it with me. I love it. It's my favorite.
It is.
But it's meaty. It's like curriculum and evaluation. It's a lot of work. There's a lot of reading.
Yes.
Let me sell it better than that. And it's also super fun.
It is. I mean, it's one of my favorite committees, with the alternate being Mr. Johnson. For Finance and Ops, Ms. Prin, Ms. Lamphier, and Mr. Claffey, with the alternate being Ms. Daniels-Williams, with Ms. Lamphier being Chair. Do you think that's gonna be too much for you with Clerk, too? Because I don't mind giving it to Mr. Claffey if he's interested.
No, I don't mind being Chair. That's cool. Thanks.
Okay. Ms. Prin, Ms. Lamphier, Mr. Claffey, with Ms. Lamphier being the alternate, I'm sorry, Chair. Yep. And then Joint Special, really, all of the same people want on it, except for Ms. Lamphier, who nicely steps out of that role, and Ms. Daniels-Williams is in on it. That was one of your choices. So for Joint Special is me, Mr. Claffey, Ms. Gilio, Ms. Shawanda Daniels-Williams, I just want to say your whole name all the time, and Ms. Raymond. And then Budget is a meeting of the whole, but I was going to have Ms. Darling chair it. So, opening and closing, and being in charge of making sure we have all of our printouts or access to. Okay. And then for Student Board Member Liaison, I have Mr. Claffey and Ms. Darling who were interested in it. I can, given you a lot, though, Ms. Darling, with, well, we're gonna still talk about CNE, but how about the two of you work with the students, okay? Did you guys have a good experience last year with Mr. Claffey, or is he just god-awful?
He did a fantastic job.
Okay, okay.
But now I feel like you need a year with me so that you can come back and compare and contrast.
So, we can do both, and you guys can figure out how you want to do it. On the Ed Council, Mr. Johnson, I didn't have, I thought that may be good for you. And Ms. Lamphier, you were interested in that.
Yes, I was, but, you know, I want to give the new people a chance, too, so if there's anyone in particular who's interested in that, I don't mind stepping back. I want to, you know, I feel bad, because we want to keep what we already have, so. Yeah, so if anyone else wants it, that's fine.
Nobody else indicated that one.
Okay, then, I'll guess I'll take it.
I also, I don't mind Ed Council. It kind of butts up against our meetings anyway, so I'm kind of typically at the office. So I don't mind taking that.
You do that.
Okay. Okay. So this brings us back to CNE, so if everybody kind of knows where they're at now, Ms. Darling?
Given where I am at with everything else, I will be happy to remove my name from the list for CNE and kind of throw my hope for Ms. Daniel Williams to get it, because it is a learning experience and a half. It's great.
Thank you. How about Ms. Prin, Ms. Gilio, Mr. Claffey, with Shawanda as, you're on the alternate as three. Heather, I'm gonna put you back as alternate on, no, I put you as a main. I think this is easy. It was easier last year when everyone was like, "We'll stay doing what we're doing," and I was like. Okay. You can still come to the meetings. Prin, would you like to do Joint Special? It's the most magical meeting ever. So the Joint Special, it meets the last Thursday of the month, second-to-last Thursday of the month. It's where the projects that are being essentially paid for by the city and then involves our facilities. We work together on, like, we built the new high school, we built the new middle school, whenever we have bigger projects happening in the elementary schools. Mr. Alderman Dowd creates the agenda, brings it to us, really, you're approving invoices, and you're watching the evolution of buildings being created.
That's my thing.
So it's a little bit of technology. I mean, really, when they're doing the newer buildings, we're working with administration on getting the most up-to-date resources. I mean, I think that's really important for our students to have. So it's pieced into that, but it's not a lot of, a lot of the legwork is done by Alderman Dowd, because he's working with admin to create all of the packets that are coming to us. So Dr. Andre will say, "We need five new magical unicorns for the 7th middle school that we're building." And Alderman Dowd goes and finds, and with Mr. Smith as well, goes and finds people who are bidding, like, "Oh, I can give you all those unicorns." And then we figure out, like, who had the best one, how much it cost, what their reputation is, and then those guys present all of the options to us and say, "But we recommend this one." And then we say, "We agree with that," or "We don't agree with that." So then we vote on whatever that is, so really that's.
I can do it. I'm in.
Okay.
It helps. I'm happy to help.
Okay. I'm trying to give you guys opportunities to step in, but also honoring, like, everything that other people have done. Yep. So, someone gets, well, it also, so HR, let's talk a little bit about HR. So, for everybody who indicated that they were interested in this, so this was Ms. Gilio, Ms. Raymond, Ms. Darling, Ms. Daniels-Williams, and Mr. Johnson. HR is not just the 10-minute meeting where we're approving personnel recommendations before the full board meeting. You're the first people that we call when we need to do interviews. For certain positions within the school district, a board member has to be present for the interviews. Those typically happen during the day, which makes it challenging for people who don't have that flexibility. So Ms. Gilio and Ms. Raymond have typically been our go-tos, because they're more available during the day. There were more, obviously, but they didn't get reelected. So, with that being said, Mr. Johnson, are you still okay? Do you think with enough time, you could be flexible with that?
Yeah, with enough time, my schedule's flexible, so I can do that.
Okay. And Ms. Daniels-Williams, you're a bit stickier on time during the day, so that's why I didn't put you in on that one. But. Ms. Darling, can I put you in as the alternate on HR?
Absolutely.
No, because then I realized that I had her in for three, and I want to keep her as the alternate for CNE, and the alternate for Finance and Ops, because she was interested in it. Everybody's got a little, some people have a little too much. So let's go back, let's go back and see what you guys have to say. So HR, Ms. Gilio, Ms. Raymond, Mr. Johnson, with the alternate being Darling. Policy, Ms. Raymond, Ms. Darling, Ms. Lamphier, the alternate being Mr. Johnson. Finance and Operations, Ms. Prin, Ms. Lamphier, Mr. Claffey, and Ms. Daniels-Williams as the alternate.
Who's the Chair?
For Finance and Ops, Lamphier.
I'm not sure if this is the right time, but I didn't know, it seems to me Ms. Daniels-Williams had, had, would want to be on Finance and Ops as well. That seems like the place where it would be easiest to give her a full assignment. And I didn't know if Ms. Prin or Mr. Claffey would be willing to step back and be the alternate for that.
Okay.
If it's helpful, I don't mind being the alternate.
Okay, so we'll flip-flop.
What does Ms. Daniels-Williams want?
Yeah, that was only her third choice. But it was Ms. Prin's second choice and Mr. Claffey's first. Finance and Ops.
I'll stay.
That one? Okay. So Finance. Instead of Prin. So Finance and Ops will be Ms. Daniels-Williams, Ms. Lamphier, Mr. Claffey, with the alternate being Ms. Prin. Joint Special is me, Ms. Prin, Ms. Gilio, Ms. Daniels-Williams, and Ms. Raymond. Budget Chair being Ms. Darling. Student Board Member Liaisons being Mr. Claffey and Ms. Darling, and Ed Council being Mr. Johnson and me. And then we're going back to CNE. So CNE, Ms. Prin, Gilio.
All right, and who's Chair?
I'm still, hold on. And Mr. Claffey, with the alternate being Ms. Daniels-Williams. And the Chair.
It would have to be.
Claffey, would you be interested in being Chair for CNE? Okay. Everybody have that written down? Everybody feel that it's fair and aligned with their interests and things that they're good at?
No, no, I'm also, I'm excited, and I just wanted to say, Ms. Daniels-Williams, I did Finance and Ops the first year I was on the board, and I really, really liked it. I learned a lot, and it was a lot of fun. A lot of people say that if you see someone's budget, you know what their moral choices are. So you learn a lot about the district, and you get to influence things, too, you know. So I'm looking forward to working with you on that.
So, I will, I'm gonna formally make the motion to read this again. So, I move that the committee assignments be, for Human Resources, Ms. Gilio as Chair, Ms. Raymond and Mr. Johnson as committee members, and Ms. Darling as the alternate. Curriculum and Evaluation being Mr. Claffey as Chair, Ms. Prin and Ms. Gilio as members, with Ms. Daniels-Williams being the alternate. Policy being Ms. Raymond Chair, Ms. Darling, Ms. Lamphier, and Mr. Johnson being the alternate. Finance and Operations being Ms. Lamphier as Chair, Shawanda Daniels-Williams and Mr. Claffey as members, and Ms. Prin as the alternate. Joint Special being Ms. Bishop, Ms. Prin, Ms. Gilio, Ms. Daniels-Williams, and Ms. Raymond. And Budget being chaired by Ms. Darling, with the Student Board Member Liaisons being Mr. Claffey and Ms. Darling, and Ed Council members being Mr. Johnson and Ms. Bishop. That's my motion.
Second.
Yo, Ms. Darling. Okay. Any discussion? A lot of discussion, that's a joke. Okay. So seeing no discussion, all those in favor of approving the committee assignments, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, sorry.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes. Thank you so much for sitting through that with me. I know it's incredibly cumbersome and challenging, but I think everybody's gonna enjoy what they're doing. We have in the past, if, like, timing doesn't work out, come back to me, let me know, like, this meeting time really isn't working for me, and we can work something out, so. Not, yes.
Do we have, does Ms. Kinsella have a sample, like, a calendar? Like, typically she gives us a.
I don't have a sample calendar, but I think we were just gonna stick with that, the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, third week of the month, so in between the first meeting and the last meeting.
Okay.
But the Chairs, Chairs of the Committees, you guys can actually make the committee time whenever you want, so.
Does that mean I can move Budget out of Wednesday?
No, because that's the policy. Okay, so can I ask for, Dr. Sarfey had a question?
I'm sorry. I'm only asking because I have lots of teachers who are gonna present with us. Just want to confirm that we're going to hold the CNE meeting for the 15th, excuse me, the 16th, because Monday is Memorial Day. Do we know?
Okay.
Okay.
Well, that's why I was asking, because typically it would be Policy on that Tuesday, but do we bump it back at the day? I don't remember what we did last year.
I don't want to make it complicated. I just had a bunch of teachers who were going to participate. That's all.
Okay. Yes, I'm fine with it. Policy's relatively flexible.
So, we're gonna get negotiations. We have two negotiations coming up. We have the NASIS and Food Service coming up this year, and then we have five ones coming up next year. I feel like the NASIS one and the Food Service one, we already have established members. I don't remember who they are, and I texted Ms. Kinsella probably 27 times today, and I couldn't text her one more time without feeling like I was just being a thorn in her side. So we'll address the negotiation appointments at a different meeting. Because that is another one where you really need to be available during the day. And unless administration and the union and all of the attorneys want to meet after work time, we probably won't get that flexibility, so we'll talk about that at another date. Daniels-Williams, you look like you had something to say.
I'm gonna be out of town on the 16th. I'm gonna be out of town on the 16th.
Of this month?
Yes, it's my birthday weekend.
Oh. That's okay. We'll, we'll figure it out. Okay. Okay. So I think we have wrapped up the unfinished business, and let's go into new business. So I'll hand the floor over to Dr. Andre.
Yep, so there was no HR committee tonight, so we just, there was a couple appointments and resignations in your packet that we're looking just for recommendations to accept.
Raymond.
I'm gonna ask for a non-public, I have a question about the personnel recommendations. It'll take five minutes, maybe. So I requested non-public under RSA 91A32A. Or B?
Both? I'll second that. Under A and B.
I don't really think it's about, I don't think A is right. Let's say B.
Okay, under B. I still second that.
In case anyone's wondering, at the bottom of your agenda, are the most commonly used reasons we go into non-public? That's where I'm getting the letter from.
We will have a super awesome meeting with NHSB, I'm stealing your thunder, but we'll have the School Board Association come in and give us the real legal rundown on right-to-know non-publics, just kind of the real interesting stuff about these meetings. Okay. Well, we have to vote.
Oh yeah, that's right, sorry.
It's gonna be by roll call, because it's going into non-public.
Okay. Let's see. Okay, the roll call vote on going into non-public. Bishop.
Yep.
Johnson. Prin.
Yes.
Daniels, Williams. Claffey.
Yes.
Darling.
Yes.
Giglio.
Yes.
Lampfier, oh, that's me, yes, and Raymond?
Yes.
Do it every time. Okay, that's nine zero, so we're now going to train on public.
All set. Okay, so we are now back in public session, 7:23, looking for a motion to seal the minutes.
I move that we seal the minutes under, I don't remember which one. Ms. Lampfier. I think it's, I believe it's RSA 91A332, render proposed action ineffective.
Sure.
Okay. And I'll second that. And it is 7:24. And now we have to do a roll call vote. Oh god.
Can you just do it based on?
Oh no, I got it, I got it. Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson, sorry, Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Prin?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels, Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Claffey? Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Ms. Giglio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Okay. So that's nine zero, we're to seal the minutes.
This brings us back to the personnel recommendations, so I am looking for a motion to accept the personnel recommendations dated January 8th, 2024, as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Raymond, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Daniels, Williams. And board members, Mr. Farley, did you let Mr. Miroz know that he has an honorary vote? So whenever you feel like voting, you can turn your microphone on and make a symbolic yea or nay.
Yes, you can.
Yeah.
And you, there's no obligation to do so. It's entirely voluntary.
Yeah. And you can always share your, your input on the votes that are happening, so we don't just need you for your student board member comments, you can actually say, I have feelings about what you're talking about, and we love to hear them. Okay? So on the, who seconded the personnel recommendations?
Oh, Ms. Daniels, Williams.
Ms. Daniels, Williams did. Okay, so on the motion to accept the personnel recommendations for January 8th, 2024, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Raymond.
Can I do my new business now? Thank you.
Forget what your new business was.
So my new business is that, oh, the School Board Association. So as you know, we are members of the School Board Association, we will vote during the budgetary process this year on whether or not to stay, but we are still members up until the end of June. So I happened to run into Barrett Christina, one of the attorneys for the School Boards Association today, and he reminded me that it is new member, new board member orientation season, and so one of the services that they provide is they will come to the larger districts. They just went to Manchester right before Christmas, and they have Rochester later this month, so he offered to come down to Nashua and do a new board member orientation for us, and for our new members, and I think that we should take them up on that offer. I don't think we need a motion to do it, but I told him that we were meeting tonight, and I would mention it. It's good, because they go over things like right-to-know, the non-public, they go over Robert's rules, and how to make motions, and all that stuff, so that you're not trying to learn on the fly. And it's a really good refresher for the rest of us. And of course, our student members are always invited to trainings. The other thing I just wanted to mention, since I have the microphone, is that shortly you should start getting emails, and I'll forward you the most recent one, from the School Boards Association, they do ongoing, like Lunch and Learn webinars, that anybody who's a member is invited to join. So the one this week is on food resources for school districts. So this Thursday coming up, hold on, I should have opened my calendar before I started.
It'll at times get filtered into your spam, because it's.
Yeah, it always goes to my spam, so, but I.
Or unfocused if you're on Outlook.
But I look it up. So this Thursday's Lunch and Learn is about, anyways, it's school lunch resources, and then the 19th is about changes in the adequacy formula for funding of public education, which will be interesting as we start to move into budget season in February, so. That's it, that's my whole spiel.
You can actually register for those webinars and take them at a later date. I have to do that, because I'm usually work when they're on, so.
Oh, yes, once you're a member, you can go on their website and watch the webinars whenever you want.
Pretty neat. We'll, I'll have Tara reach out to everybody about a date that works, so we'll probably throw out like, two or three dates, and then tell me which one works best for you. And I've been doing a lot of reading over the last two weeks about, you know, running boards and, and. Reading list is incredibly boring right now, but I will, I'll write it up and then have Tara send it out to everybody. One of the things we can't do is we can't email the board as a whole, because then it's a meeting, but I can have Tara share stuff with everybody, because then it's accessible to everybody. So I'll put that list of resources together, in case you have ample free time to read How to Be a Better Board Member. So this brings us up to the second public comment, which, did anybody else want to sign up, because I've been holding on to this sheet? No? Okay, so it's just Mr. Scare, come on down. So for public comment, just to keep the new board members up to date, we do 15-minute sessions for public comment, oh, you actually go to the podium now. Things changed from last time, the podium's now working. We do 15-minute public comment sessions, if we get longer than 15 minutes, I'll look to the board to extend the time periods, but each individual person coming up to speak has three minutes to speak. I put the, I put a timer on, you can't hear it go off, so I just make really intense eye contact and say, your time is up, so. And I try to be respectful about it, but sometimes I have to kind of flail a little bit, because people are typically looking at their phone and, and can't see that I'm flailing at them. So let me get my timer all set. Just one person. Okay, go ahead.
Good evening, Chairman Bishop, board members, and superintendent. I'm here to discuss the display just down the hall. Along with the posters discussing 18 different gender IDs and sexual orientations, including Achillean, Xenogender, and Eroance, there's a definition of gender. Gender is what you know, you are in your own brain, and that might not be what your birth sex is. People then may try to change their body and how they present themselves to show who they are. Now, how does that make sense? I know in my own brain that I'm 175 pounds. If I stand on the scale, it'll probably, it might say that I'm 182. But I know I'm 175, so I'm gonna be 175, and the scale is wrong by that definition. What these posters are teaching people, teens, is that they have gender identities, and these identities, not their bodies, are their authentic selves. And that way, we teach them to despise their bodies. You can go to social media sites and read the stories of hundreds of thousands of young people who are egging each on through horrible self-inflicted harm, as they try to correct bodies that you believe stand in the way of their authentic selves. They describe rib damage from chest binding, synthetic testosterone causing premature menopause, and pain and bleeding from genital atrophy, intense cramps that come from the atrophy of the muscles around the uterus, and inevitably lead to hysterectomies. It's abusive to tell boys and girls that they're born in the wrong bodies. And if I discuss myself as anything but my body, then I'm bringing religion into the discussion, because I'm not discussing my body, what else could I be discussing but my soul? And that's what transgenderism is. It's a religion that teaches that we have gendered souls, and these are our authentic selves, our true selves, and not our bodies. And as such, we shouldn't have an established religion in our school. So I'd like to see the symbols and the doctrine removed. I'd like you to put an end to the displays and the flags that teach this. Barring that, I hope that parents are careful about where they send their children, especially if they have daughters on the autism spectrum, because we know they're especially vulnerable to this ideology. Before you accuse me of hatred or ignorance, I stood on the sidewalk and had hundreds of conversations about how, how this is harming our youth, and I've had this, conversations with clinicians who disagreed with me, as well as many trans-identifying people, I'm talking to them. I also work very hard to keep up with the research, so I invite any of you to come and speak with me individually, I can arrange that, and I'd be happy to have that conversation, so thank you.
Okay, no other second comments? We are back to board member comments. Just to throw water right in the fire, Mr. Johnson, it's board member comment time, this is not response to superintendent comments, this is just your, your free, free thinking as it pertains to either the meeting, or whatever you want to say.
No, just thank you very much for everyone being here, and thanks for welcoming to the board. Again, looking forward to what we can do together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Ms. Prin?
I echo Mr. Johnson and say I'm very excited, I think these next four years are gonna be great.
Daniels, Williams?
Say thank you to the city of Nashua for everything, and I'm excited to see what we'll do here together.
Claffey?
Yeah, I saw in the paper that a South soccer player, and I'm probably gonna butcher his name, so please help me, Santi Santarosoro, does that sound right?
Santiago Lemesstra?
I thought it said Santi in the picture, but anyway, you know him?
Yeah, I know Santi.
So he's been recognized as one of the, he was named All-American and recognized as one of the top 40 high school players in the country, so congratulations to him. Of course, that was the Telegraph, so it might be, you know, mistaken. I'm just gonna quote him.
Also add that he, he committed to UMass Lowell to play soccer there.
Lampfier?
Okay, it's just great to be back, nice to see everybody, looking forward to our next meeting.
Darling?
I'm not gonna go on, I'm not gonna go on a huge speech about how there's more genders than just XXXY, and I'm not gonna go on a speech about what is right or wrong when it comes to anyone having a different life path than me. But what I am gonna say is there's one problem I have with those posters out there, and it's the fact that they actually got one of the definitions wrong, and I would love to see them update that, because to be pansexual is to be sexually romantic or emotionally attracted to people of all genders. And as that's what I personally identify as, it would be nice to have the right definition. But that being said, thank you, Nashua High North, for having those posters up, because it's important that kids have the language to identify in whatever way they are. That's it for me, thank you.
I just wanted to say that you talked about us being on negotiating committees, and I, I would like to maybe be on different negotiating committees next time around. Last, I mean, I loved being on food service and NASIS, I mean, it was great, but I think with my years of experience, I could maybe be on one that has a little more challenge to it, maybe, and so just going forward, I'd be, like, like to be considered for.
Raymond?
Perhaps we could ask for volunteers when the committees start.
Volunteer in tribute?
Volunteers, voluntolds, you know, whatever it takes. Oh shoot, now I've lost my train of thought. Oh, I wanted to mention, so there is a bill at the State House right now, there's a lot of bills at the State House, there's over 1,200, I think, but this particular one was on my mind today, it's HB 1471, and it is a bill to declare a potential school holiday on April 8th, which is the day of the solar eclipse, because the North Country will be in 100% totality, Nashville will be, Nashville will be at 96% totality, and the, I listened to a bunch of experts talk about it all afternoon, and it was absolutely fascinating, and now I'm really excited about the eclipse. But Nashville will be 96%. The, the time that it hits is at 3:30 in the afternoon, which is when some of our elementary schools are trying to drive home. And so the question came up today about student safety in regards to knowing not to look at the solar eclipse, and, you know, on the buses, in the commuting on that day. The discussion really did not come to any type of conclusion today, and I'll keep an eye on that and report back, but I did want to kind of put the bug in the ear of the superintendent, mostly, and the assistant superintendent for elementary, because I think it's gonna impact our elementary kids the most, about whether or not we want to be doing some forward thinking. I suspect the state will simply authorize districts to make it an excused absence for any parent who chooses to take their kid out, but I look forward to hearing what Nashua is doing to celebrate it, because the next time this hits New Hampshire will be in 55 years, and some of us won't be here anymore, but the littlest of my S might get to see two. That, that's it, that's my whole commentary. I'm like, on the solar eclipse train now, I'm so excited.
Well, when you go back to the state, ask them, how does the sun get a haircut? Eclipse it.
Oh gosh.
Really need to get up on the podium and say that. Okay, so I have no comments, but just welcome to you guys, I am super excited to take the momentum that we have built as a board and continue it on, really focusing on student outcomes, on enriching the resources and services and supports that are within the district, and supporting our amazing administration, administrative team in continuing the work of providing for our students and ensuring that teachers and staff and students are all met with an excellent education. So with that, I'm looking for.
Motion to adjourn? I motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Ms. Giglio.
Second.
And Ms. Darling, seconds. I know, that was weird for a second.
That was weird.
So all those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
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 Any opposed? We are now in, we are now adjourned at 7:40.